One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for being here, everybody. First item up is the minutes from the May 6, 2025 regular city council meeting.
I'll motion that we approve those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion from Becky. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. We have a second. Rick wasn't here, so he will be abstaining. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. Minutes are approved. The agenda, you have the revised one in front of you that adds the summary of the city administrator performance review. Do we have any other changes to the agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the revised city council meeting agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is revised.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Mike. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. The agenda is approved. Guests in open forum, is there anybody here tonight that would like to address the council? All right, we will move on to committee reports then. First up is the summary. So, the city council, we conducted the performance review of the city administrator at a closed session during the May 6 council meeting. The council evaluated the administrator on communication with the council and staff competency in the performance of his work, quality of the work performed, relationship with staff, and budget management. And the council unanimously said the administrator's performance met or exceeded the expectations of the city council. Well done, Mr. LaRue. Thank you. All right, move on to the EDA. And Robin's gone, and I was gone at the last meeting. Jacob, you want to talk about that? Thank you. I didn't warn you about that, sorry.
That's all right. No worries at all.
So, EDA met, I gotta figure out the date, because it was the second, hold on one second. I'll tell you which day.
11th.
Yeah, it's a Monday. 12th, so. Last week, May 12th. And the item, the main item on that agenda was talking about the city-owned industrial acreage over across the way there, south of Todd Potter. And there's some interest in that property and talking about the appraisal, getting that done, so that we can move forward with getting the right value on those lots. So, that was what was discussed. And EDA kind of unanimously agreed to move that forward. They had talked about it at the previous meeting as well. And so, that is on your agenda in the consent for tonight to get that appraisal done. And then, there'll be some other negotiating with the interested party in that property. And then, some other updates generally.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Jacob? Awesome. Thank you. Public Works Committee?
Public Works, we met last Wednesday. We had a pretty good discussion about the compo site. It has been used very much, it's been very busy. We've already actually gone through our grant money, just because of the sheer volume in the first quarter. So, what's happening is, so, we have been directed to keep, you know, giving them the bills, and then they're gonna kind of see with the other people in the county, if they have any monies left over, if we can like, kind of, just reimburse to the cities that need them. I know Zimmerman was contacted, they're having the same exposure at their site as well. And of course, we're also dealing with, you know, people taking advantage of the compo site and just dropping off wrong things. So, what's going on is Streets has been working with the city police just to kind of keep an eye on it. And if you're found, you know, basically dropping off things that are not approved, if you come and pick those up, you will be, you won't be fined. But obviously, if you are, it is, it's a pretty hefty fine, it's a $350 fine for illegal dumping there. We are changing some signage to make it just very clear with pictures of what is not being able to get dropped off. So, that's about it with that. We talked about, there's gonna be a tool cat replacement, but we're not gonna talk about that until our first meeting in June. So, we've got a couple bids on that. And we just had a brief discussion, too. The school reached out to us, because, you know, we're getting a lot of state championships in this town, and wanting to put the signs up on the highway, and they're kind of losing space for those. So, we're just kind of gonna be in conversations with the school to see alter, you know, alternative ways of posting that stuff, and see what we can do. So, that's it.
Sounds good. We're doing too much winning, is what I'm hearing.
Right?
All right. Excel Advisory Board. Excel Advisory, we met last Friday. We met with representatives from the county, Excel, the city. I don't think anybody was there from a school. They're invited, but there wasn't anybody there. And it was just a information sharing. City with upcoming projects, and then Excel with some of their upcoming projects, and some of the county stuff going on. So, just more information sharing. Sounds good. Any questions for Rick on Excel? Not, we'll move to Fire Board?
Fire Board, we met last night, May 19th. Talked, it was a pretty quick meeting. The Red Path Audit, they were expecting them to be onsite in June for the presentation. And speaking of winning all the time, we continued this, little more discussion, but still no decisions made yet about bus, about escorts, so when the teams are going to state or whatever, about having the fire department enter, you know, well, specifically the fire department, because we're talking Fire Board, escorting the teams out, and, or if they're returning back to have them escorted back, and kind of developing a policy on that, just because, you know, if it's, you know. Anyway, so, they're looking to develop a policy on that, so, still more discussion on that. So, that was the main, main item, other than just paying the bills.
Awesome. Any questions for Rick on Fire Board? If not, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec was canceled.
Thank you, Mike. Planning Commission?
Planning Commission was not canceled.
I wasn't there.
I just know that Parker, I got the email.
All right, so, Planning Commission, we met last night, right after Fire Board, actually. 6:00 PM, and we had two items. Number one was the, we had a public hearing for the CUP for, which is eight Bravo on our list for tonight here, so we'll, can discuss that more. We had a public hearing for that. That was pretty, pretty seamless. We also had a second public hearing, and this was, this was the lion's share of the meeting, which was the UDO, so the code rewrite. We had the public hearing last night. We did have, we had one, two, three, four, I believe, four people from the public. Just, just, one was just observing, but the other three were, were asking some specific questions about some things, and just, it was a good meeting overall. And we, we did close the public hearing, and then, there were, there were some changes that, some minor changes that we had asked the staff to clarify on a few things, so they're gonna be doing that. I believe one of our June meetings is when that will be coming to council here for, for all of us. So, a lot of, lot of work. It was probably the last working session we had with the, working with Mike Lamb and some of the folks there. So, we've been working with them for over two years on this. So, was, last night's meeting went till 8:30, and that was very common. We've done that probably half a dozen times. Six of the 12 meetings that we've had, Planning Commission, I would say minimum over the last two years, have been that, like, going through this, this has been many, many hours of work. And that's just the work in the meetings, not to even talk about the work that goes outside the meetings. So, this has been many, many hours of putting this, reducing the code down, and, you know, making it more legible in many ways, and just taking things that were in maybe three different areas and combining them into one. It's just, it's a lot of work, and it's, it's, it's gonna be a good thing. So, we will get to see that here in June.
Sounds good. Any questions for Rick on planning? If not, Mr. LaRue, the PD City Hall project update?
Yep, we opened the doors on Monday, so the new entrance is being used. The police department have moved into their spaces. There's some stuff yet to do, the Clear Story work out front, that started on Monday, that has the white panels on the area right over the entrance. The rain has obviously pushed that off for a couple of days. And they started the demo work over here, in the old conference room, and then the offices along that side, as well as the staff bathroom. And that's been going on for the last couple of days, and work will just continue.
All right. Is the street still closed, as they were saying, or did that get delayed because of the?
Well, they had, they did, we're doing work on it on Monday. Obviously, the rain is gonna push that off a little bit. I think the original intent was to have it done by the end of the week, but I don't know where that is now.
Thursday, I haven't heard. It should still be open. They had a buffer day in there.
Okay. So, hopefully by Friday.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to agenda number eight. Board Committee and Consultant Reports. Mr. Ebensteiner, the first quarter financials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, so, first quarter fi- financials, just to give you a quick update. We just got off of the audit last meeting, so jumping right into 2025. Start off with the general fund. Tax revenue is at 0%, so haven't collected any through March, which is within expectation. We'll receive a portion in June, and then July, and then the remaining in December. Interest revenue has continued to be strong, nearly 60% of budget through, through March. So, we have a well-structured ladder and have a good diversity of, of investments, so getting some good returns there. And overall, revenue is at 4.18% of budget, so a little bit higher than, than prior years. I looked back last year, around 2%. With the community center now reported as part of the general fund, we are collecting those charges for memberships on a monthly basis. So, community center charges for services are approximately 28% of budget, so ahead of, ahead of budget there on collections, inconsistent with expectations. General fund expenditures, a little over 19% of budget through 25% of the year. And then, that does include workers' comp premiums, which are for the whole year, but, but really are paid in the first quarter. And I think property and casualty insurance came through in April, so we'll see that in the next financial updates. EDA Fund, they're largely tied to property taxes, much like the general fund. One I have to note, the Rockefeller philanthropy grant that we received in '24, we did have some deferred revenue that carried into '25. So, $126,000 was deferred and carried into '25, and then we'll be spending that on, on those grant expenditures. And that's really, gets to why expenditures are at 40% of budget through 25% of the year. Jacob and, and us have been working to get those grant funds spent. We did get an extension on, on that grant, so they're working to, to spend there. Golf Course Fund, reminder, no operating property tax levy there. Revenues are slightly behind '24, but we did have a really early start in '24. So, really strong at $571,000 through March. And then, on the expenditure side, once again, incurred the workers' comp premiums. And overall, golf expenditures at 16% of budget. So, currently, at the end of March, had returned about $169,000 of income for the first quarter. So, good start to the year. Water Fund revenues, consistent with typical first quarter. Water use slightly ahead of '24. Revenues are around 17% of budget, and expenses at 17% as well. And then, on the wastewater side, have domestic, domestic wastewater. They're a little more consistent. Their sewers at 21.3% through March. And then, on the expenditure side, definitely have some capital spend that carried over from '24. So, you've seen Chris, he's brought a few wastewater projects already this year, so you'll see those continue to flow in as we, as we get some of those projects wrapped up. So, definitely expenditures are somewhat behind budget now, but will catch up as the year progresses. And then, on the industrial wastewater side, revenues are tracking as expected. Revenues at 25, and expenditures at 13%, with some of those capital expenditures coming in as well. So, otherwise, I'd like to make it more exciting, but it's in line with expectations and in line with the budget. So, Budget and Finance had reviewed the, the March financials. So, really no action, but good field. Any questions?
Any questions?
One thing I will point out is, I don't want it to be exciting coming from you.
Yep.
I wore red, I tried to make it a little, you know, liven it up a little bit.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, as Rick referred to, eight Bravo, I think. Semstone Products Company Conditional Use Permit for Outdoor Aggregate Storage. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, we have a request for a conditional use permit for .65 acres of outdoor aggregate storage at 11300 125th Avenue Southeast, or the Semstone property. That property is zoned I-2 industrial, which does have a conditional use of outdoor storage of raw materials in that zone. And so, how this permit started is, during a discussion with a contractor, staff had about a possible building permit in the future for Semstone. Staff looked at some aerial imagery from 2022 and 2020, and 2020, which showed some activity going on of storage. And so, we let them know that they needed a CUP for that. Semstone was really open to that and really flexible. And so, they then submitted a CUP application, along with the attached narrative from the applicant, upon notification that they were required to have that. As Rick has touched on, we held a public hearing last night at Planning Commission. There was one public comment, which was really just asking if, what the white residue was in the imagery that we attached, which was likely just some, some residue from the products, but staff couldn't confirm. And so, there were no objections or anything from the public. As far as the comp plan, this does meet 2040 comp plan goals. That area is guided for industrial use, as well as it has some industrial uses that are nearby or surrounding that property. That site has access out of 125th Avenue, as well as it's served by a private well and septic system, which city staff did confirm with the Minnesota Department of Health, as well as check our city records. So, some conditions staff did want to touch on is, this is limited to the proposed .65 areas shown on the site plan, which is Exhibit A. Staff did put in there that there's some flexibility to increase that, an additional half acre, if they were to provide a detailed plan, if they need one, or if they need to increase their space. The drainage must not impact neighboring properties. All aggregate must be stored in those concrete bunker blocks that they have there already, as well as the material must be limited to 12 feet in height. And then, that area must be maintained in a neat, dust-controlled manner, as well as no runoff is allowed into the onsite septic system. So, with that, staff would be looking for a motion adopting Resolution 2545, or a CUP for Semstone Products with those conditions. And so, with that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Austin? Seems pretty straightforward. There's no questions. Somebody want to make a motion for Resolution 2545?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2545, recommending approval of the CUP for outdoor aggregate storage at 11300 125th Avenue for Semstone Products.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Rick, second by Mike, for Resolution 2545. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. And that motion is carried. Thank you, Austin. Going on to number nine, Administrator and Staff Reports. The Farm Friends Barn Community Garden Fencing Donation Request. Mr. LaRue?
Mayor and City Council members, the community garden was previously located on the property north of the community center, which the city sold in '23 for the housing development. Staff removed the fencing at the end of that growing season, stored it. And we have tried for the last couple of years to find an alternate location, just haven't been able to work something out for, for '24 and '25. Staff was approached by Gene Johnson, who was representing the Farm Friends Barn. They expressed an interest in establishing the community gardens over on their property that they own. The fence that the city has is approximately 100 by 100, about 100 by 40 feet. And they requested that the city donate the fencing. They will assume all the responsibilities for, for maintenance and working with people to, to rent plots. And so, we've discussed this among staff, and we would recommend that the council approve the donation of the fence to them. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think it's a great idea. It's perfect.
All right. Any other questions? If not, someone want to make a motion to make that donation to the Farm Friends Barn?
I'll make the motion to approve the donation of the fence imposed from the old community gardens to the Farm Friends Barn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Becky, second by Mike. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. Donation is approved. Back to Mr. LaRue for the consent agenda.
Mayor Colbaker and City Council members, items for approval on tonight's consent agenda include: approve the revised hiring and termination report, approve temporary liquor licenses for the Becker Alliance Club, adopt Resolution 25-43, approving an appraisal for city-owned industrial lots for a price not to exceed $6,500. Adopt Resolution 25-44, approving a quote from Ruck Construction, the amount of $10,520 to complete the demolition and removal of the house on the 212 property. Declare the 2019 police interceptor vehicle surplus property and order its disposal. And approve pay request number 10, in the amount of $451,564.95 to Apex Construction Group for the Police Department City Hall Project. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, somebody want to make a motion to approve said consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike, second by Becky, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. Consent agenda is approved. Now, we have the bills. Anybody have any questions or want to make a motion to pay the bills?
Should we pay the bills?
I'll second.
Motion by Becky, second by Rick, to pay the bills. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of paying the bills, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. The bills are paid. Does anybody else have anything that needs to be brought before council tonight? If not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Remove, adjourn.
I'll second. Motion by Mike, second by Rick, to adjourn. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. Meeting's adjourned at 5:23 PM. Thank you, everybody. We do have a executive session next. Do we just want to roll right into it, or is anybody?
I'm ready.
Mike is ready.
It's a pretty short meeting, so I don't know if anybody needed a break. All right. We're gonna roll then, right into, we'll call the executive session to order here at also 5:23. And first up is Mr. Sanders with the infrastructure grant in discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we did a little more homework on the infrastructure grant that we talked about last time. We actually asked the questions, following that meeting, to Minnesota Housing about what happens, how does this affect private property owners, and, you know, the qualifying housing development, how does that impact on affordability, and how does that get required? We also attended a technical session that was held, I think that was a couple weeks ago. Lori attended, Austin and I attended. This was a question that came up, not only from us, but several other communities as well, so wasn't unique to us. The answer to this question, you'll see in this email, we actually got this on the 12th, which was last week. I didn't think we would actually get an answer to this, because they keep sticking to this May 30th date on their FAQs, but this was straight from them regarding their understanding from our question. So, there's no general requirement for construct, that the qualifying housing development be completed. That's kind of what we talked about last time, it's an infrastructure grant. So, in this case, you'll see in here, since grant funds help pay for the publicly-owned infrastructure necessary, but not the development itself, there's no program requirement regarding physical completion. So, it's not one that they're gonna say, you got three years and you gotta do it. And again, that relates back to, this was confirmed at the meeting as well. The other piece is on affordability. Again, you're seeing some pretty big vagueness here on, it's not generally prescriptive in regards to how affordability is achieved. Again, this relates to the previous one, it's an infrastructure grant, it's gonna be very difficult, and you can see this in their answers, not only here, but from what we heard at the meetings, to enforce affordability component on these. That being said, I know Lori had pulled some stuff together, and they talked to Budget and Finance about some of these items as well, to show what those affordability pieces would be at an 80%, and they're still fairly high income amounts. So, with that, the deadline for this grant comes up on June 12th. They'll post the formal, and I use in quotes, the formal FAQs on the 30th, which is only 12 days before the deadline. But in general, what we're seeing is, it'd be good to take advantage of the opportunity to apply, I guess, also because, you know, I know Councilman Hendrickson mentioned this, that we're not getting ourselves tied into something that we're gonna regret later. So, based on the responses that we're seeing here, we don't anticipate that will be the case. But we'll answer any questions, and I know Lori's, we're all here to answer whatever questions you have or concerns. But we'd recommend kind of moving forward with that and submitting. I, I will say, our chances of getting it are pretty slim, based on the dollar amounts that they're allocated for it, and just some of the scoring. But if we don't do it, we're gonna have to pay for some of this work anyway, so it's a, be something that we should take advantage of.
So, we talked about two projects. I think, if you were to submit it, would you submit it for just the one, or would you?
I would say so. I don't think, you could submit for the other one, but this one, based on the scoring that's in the, the scoring criteria, and based on what we heard out of the technical advisory one, that one is gonna score much better than this one would. So, we would recommend going with the Luann Drive one. Sometimes you, you know, you want to put more eggs in the basket. In this case, single family is gonna score at a lower rate. There are points that they give, I think it's over 12 or 15, I can't remember the number, but there are points that they give for denser units.
In other words, they're promoting density units.
Yeah.
Do you know if there was anything in the current legislation that just passed with the housing initiatives that would affect this grant?
There's, the, the amount got reduced, I can tell you that. So, the amount went from, I want to say it was 8 million, and I just found out about this today, Shannon keyed me into it. It's now 2 million. So, again, that's why we say that it's a pretty small chance, but there's still a chance. But that would be the only thing that I, I know of currently.
Well, we know we're not gonna get the money if we don't apply.
Right.
That's a guarantee.
Yeah. And I, on grants, you know, I know we've had this conversation, this is a strategic grant, it's not just one we willy-nilly thought about, and like, hey, there's free money here. It's, it's a project that we're gonna have to do at some point in the near future. Anyway, the questions that we've got from this are from multiple multifamily developers, and so doing this half of the road will make it even more attractive for these individuals to, to come in.
Yeah, I mean, my biggest, my biggest concern was getting us locked into something that we, like you said, that we would have regretted later. You get down, and it's like, well, yeah, it's $200,000 or whatever, but holy cow, you know. So, the vagueness of it here, and the fact that, you know, we're not blocking in, you know, that this isn't gonna, even if we accept it, this is, you know, I'm kind of surprised that they don't have a, a more stringent criteria. And maybe it's one of those things, the invisible scoring of it, you know, maybe they will score it like that, but.
There are some scoring criteria that we've, that's why we say there's a slim chance, because there is some scoring that they give additional for certain areas and certain types of things, but that we may not meet. But again, we don't know who's gonna apply for sure out of a lot of these. So, yeah, it's a, it's a good chance to, to get something that we may not have gotten otherwise. And I think one thing to be aware of, too, is even if you're awarded the grant, that contract's gonna have to come back anyway. Legal's gonna review it, you're gonna review it before anything is signed on the dotted line and given. So, this is just the application we're talking. So this is just the application we're talking about.
Is most of the prep work done for this, or are you going to be spending dozens of hours?
A lot of it's done from engineering side. We have the drawings that are done, some of the estimates that are done. We know the questions that they're asking. They went through and recorded the whole presentation, which is probably good because some of the questions don't show up in the application until you press next. So we already have that. So Austin's working on doing that. And he'll have, he has the word document and the answers to each one of those so that when it's time, it'll just be plug and play. It'll take a little time to put together between him, and it has already. But the drawings from engineering are already there.
I'm good with pursuing it.
Yep, I think we should.
Okay. Sounds good. Move things forward. Oh, yeah, yeah. So we'll bring that first meeting in June, June third. Since the deadline's the twelfth, we won't have another one after that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Roundtable. I have one issue. I talked to Jacob and Lieutenant Lynn Bloom someday, I think it was last week, can't remember anymore. Getting a lot of questions about e-bikes and these things almost wiping out senior citizens on trails. And some of these things are going forty miles an hour and twenty eight miles an hour. So our current ordinance prohibits motorized vehicles, but state law does not recognize an e-bike as a motorized vehicle, but.
Isn't there different like level makes of them or something like that?
Like four different classes. So I asked Jacob and and Chris to look into it because it's not a good mix to have a runner, toddler, a mom with a stroller or a senior citizen or me, you know, walking. I've heard from a lot of people that you kind of look and you think things are clear. Well, if something's clipping along at thirty miles an hour on a trail.
Yep.
If it's a bike, you don't think it's going that fast.
Right.
But the thing that I noticed more than anything else is they run stop signs, which is very dangerous.
For sure. Can we put a speed limit on the trail if we can't say motorized bikes? No matter what it is, whether you're rollerblading or pedal biking at a mean clip. I mean, can we just say no fat? And that's really.
Well, you're better off.
Running though.
You're you're better off.
You run twelve miles an hour.
From a bear?
But you're better off having them than you are on the streets.
And I'll get the bear that's right behind you. How about that?
Rick, you're better off having them on the trails than you are on the streets.
At thirty miles an hour?
Well, whatever they go, you know, they're not supposed to go, they're not supposed to go that fast.
Well, they do.
Well, they're not, but they're not. But I personally would rather have them on the street. I mean, then they're, not to be cruel, but then they're taking their own life into their hands.
Yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying. They run stop signs and everything else.
Yeah. But if they're on the street.
I personally have seen it, so.
Oh, I got passed on Edgewood one day by one.
There's a lot.
And I'm like, wow. I was in a vehicle. I was not running.
Was that your twelve mile an hour?
That was my, yeah. I'm like, wow.
Is there an age requirement on those? I'm more concerned about the age.
No, there isn't.
There's a lot of young kids on those things. Okay.
There is, and I don't know how we legislate some of those things. But I I personally am in favor of not having them on our trails and sidewalks. Because it, so anyway, they're looking into it.
What did Chris say about that?
He's, he voiced his concern as well, but is looking into, the League of Minnesota Cities did some additional work, I think last year or twenty three, so he's going to look into that a little bit more. He he is, I talked to another officer the other night, and he's like, yeah, this this is just, it's bad and with something bad waiting to happen.
Mr. Coonson? I just want to make a comment from the park side of it, because we're looking at our park, our our trails, Edgewood, the one that I just talked to, a citizen lives right off of, Joseph, the cul-de-sac and the backside access to city park. They're concerned there. But we're we're going to go out and make sure that we've got stop sign posted at the the big trails, not all the sidewalks, but the big trails and the non-motorized vehicle signs on all of the trails as well. So if you if you go out of town on twenty four, you'll see that that's, that'll be the catalyst for the future trail on twenty three. And what we're going to bring to town on on twenty three here and Edgewood Trail. So when we come to those intersections, you'll see the stop ahead, the stop. And then as you cross, no motorized vehicles at any access point to the trail. So we need to do a little bit better job of cleaning up some of our older trails to make sure. So we're just trying to do what we can to help that out as well, and then working in conjunction with PD to see what we can do.
Sure.
So just to give you a heads up from the park standpoint.
So if we say no motorized vehicles, but if they're not constituted as motorized vehicles, how, what does that do to solve the e-bike issue?
So Bike MN, I I tried to research this. So Bike MN is one of the the, they're not a governing body, but they're kind of a, they put on a lot of bike rides. And what they deem is if it's a pedal assist bike, it is considered a bicycle in a in a non-motorized vehicle because you have to move the pedals to accelerate it. What they consider a motorized vehicle is any of these e-bikes that just have throttle. If it's throttle controlled, it's a motorized vehicle, and that's what can't be on your trails.
Even the ones you pedal have a throttle control, don't they?
They, no, it's it's all pedal assist on that. So you, if your pedal's not moving, you can change the level of assistance. Usually it's a zero or a one to 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 ten. So if you're barely pedaling and you have it cranked all the way up, you're barely pedaling and it'll go up to twenty eight miles an hour. But that's still considered a bicycle, according to their standards. But the other ones, like my father-in-law's got a Fat Tire bike that he has no business riding. And it'll go thirty five miles an hour. It's a Rambo camo bike. He was going to use it for trail hunting. Yeah, right. And I got on it, hit the throttle, and I was like thirty five miles an hour. I couldn't believe it, so. But that's what, that's how they define the criteria. So I had a couple of notes. I was waiting to, for the the chief to be officially assigned the chief. And then I'll interact with him from the park side of it as well to try and use our research that we have as well and to clean up our trails.
Yeah, on our on our ordinance with the four-wheel vehicles and stuff, do do they have to have a driver's license to operate them?
For four-wheeler, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all, that's all road, so if they're doing.
If they're on the city streets, if they're on city streets, they have to have a driver's license, okay. Maybe do the same thing with, well, no.
Yeah, I, I don't know. It's, I understand it's a can of worms, but, you know, the first incident we have where someone gets wiped out with one, it's.
It's going to be serious.
It's going to be a trip to the hospital for somebody.
Or terminal, one or the other. Like I said, particularly running stop signs, it's just not a good thing to do.
So I guess I would just be, I would just be curious, what what are our options?
I mean, that's what, that's simply what I asked Chris to start looking into. So he, like I said, he's going to consult the league. I've reached out to a couple area mayors and it's, yeah, this is an issue.
Let's see what Chris comes up with, if we dive into anything.
And Three Rivers Park District is obviously dealing with this throughout their system. And you also have, they have, of course, their regional trail system, but then they have the city parks that are connected to that trail system where it may not jive. And so I think a lot of kind of the back and forth on this has been done. So it's really kind of seeing what the pros and the cons are, where people are landing. So getting that information together, we'll we'll look for a a future work session to present that.
It's amazing how it only takes a couple to root it for everybody.
Well, it started out those little like electric scooters.
Oh, those were horrible.
And the wheels like this big, and it's like, how are you riding that? And now, like I said, I got passed on Edgewood. I'm, I was obeying the speed limit too, and they still went right by me, so. Just to give people heads up, that's kind of something that's.
Yeah, you don't see many adults on them.
Oh, yes.
I was just going to say one thing to you. I know you'd asked, the mayor had asked about, you know, is it something that could go on the U D O? This is just really for clarity for those online. It's a public safety thing in the right of ways, so those are really lay in a different chapter in ordinance. And so just more for clarity for the board on that, kind of just a side note.
You don't want me screwing up your U D O after two years, so.
I, I didn't, yeah, right. And now we have to do e-bikes, no.
Right. Took care of chickens. How about e-bikes? What about e-chickens?
It's a good thing we had Planning Commission last night.
No.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to see an e-chicken flying past.
It's probably coming. It's not a real chicken. All right. Well, does anybody have anything else? If not, we could entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session.
No, we don't vote on anything here. You just adjourn when you're done.
Oh, all right, then we're adjourned. My vote counts. We're done. Five forty. These are still on.
Well, I got my niece graduated.
Yeah?
Like Shannon's. I'm still on.